Okay, let's call my meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's February 18, 2022 revised order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, FEL Chapter 38, Section 18, meetings of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District's school committee will be conducted both in person and remote until further notice. Agenda items listed are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Not all items listed may be in fact discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB and the school recorder and other members in the public. So let's start with a roll call vote. Roll call of the members, Ann Hutchinson.
Aye.
Jason St. Peter.
Aye.
John Stephen.
Aye.
And Bonnie, Bonn Bafoni. Molly is now here, Will Fields.
Aye.
Diane Sinder. Cory Spray.
Aye.
Rich Dehony.
Aye.
And I am president. Start with the minutes of the June 2nd, 2022 meeting. Do I have a motion? Some move. Got a second. Second. It's a motion by Bill, a second by Rich. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ann.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Sean.
Stand.
Bill.
Aye.
Diane.
Yes.
Cory.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And I am aye. It's unanimous with one extension. Going to the superintendent's report. Okay, so we've got a number of good news items, but we also have a number of guests, including students and faculty tonight, so we're going to be a little brief on the good news items so we have more time for the discussion. So obviously I'd like to welcome the students and some of their parents and other community members. It's been a long time since we've had this many people in the room together. And I'll share it later in the COVID report of where Berkshire County is green for the first time in forever, so hopefully we continue to move in a good direction. So Katie, what's going on at Muddy Brook?
Well, we're just finishing up the year. We got Great Field Day. We came out, was led to see a lot of little kids running around. They had a good time, just a relaxing day. And we had our fourth grade circle yesterday, which that was my first one. It's a very cool way to end elementary, just right. So that's about it.
Good. I'll fill in for Ben in the middle school. They had a really nice graduation the other night. Since we hadn't had one in person inside in a while, it was long, like almost two hours, much longer than the high school graduation. And lots of cheering for everybody and lots of awards. And the high school's going to get a great group of students coming up. Kristy. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Julian and Zoe.
Yeah, we'll be brief. I think we've gotten really good at this. But we're excited to pass the role of the student voice tonight, especially onto our rising sophomores that are here. We're really excited to have them, so we'll try and save as much of our time for them. But we really wanted to thank you all for another successful year. We truly feel welcomed here. At first, it was hard being students in a school committee of all adults and our superintendent and our principals, but we truly felt heard and enjoyed being here. It's our last day of school and there's nowhere else we'd love to be. And thank you for listening to our repetitive questions, even when the meeting went longer because of it or the bad jokes that I make that don't land. So yeah, thank you for all that you've done to support us in that role. Today wrapped up the school year.
Yeah, we had a couple of great sunny weeks to end the year, really feeling like we were making connections after the stressful things had ended, just learning for the fun of it and connecting with our fellow students and our teachers. We spent time in the outdoor classroom, playing can jam, doing puzzles in the library, playing Monopoly and AP Calculus. And the year really ended with a bang yesterday when a soccer ball flew through the window of the high school, all by accident and good fun, really a bang. In terms of student engagement over the summer, we have, as always, some of our more rigorous courses and AP classes have summer work. Students are prepping, working really hard for the ACTs and SATs, and rising seniors will start their college applications and be writing their essays. We have students across the district participating in project connection programs at the school.
Yeah, there was a question last week just about engagement in the summer and summer work, so we wanted to provide what we see from the student aspect. Students working in summer jobs, a few of my friends are mowing lawns with the town in Stockbridge. So student participating in internships, some of those internships were connected through our guidance department, through Mr. Flynn and through our CBT sort of curriculum. And then finally, we have our restorative justice program, continuing working with the Stoke Collaborative this summer to train with faculty, administrators, and other students. So a lot of great work going on and a very exciting summer.
Great, thank you very much. I sort of forgot, sometimes I stand between people and lunch. Today, we stand between students and summer vacation, so it's even more remarkable that you're here. I'm going to go through three things, I think relatively quickly, and then we'll move to the most important part, which is to hear from the students. In the school committee packet, there's a request to increase half-time English as a second language teaching position to a full-time position. From a financial perspective, we have it covered by grant funds, so there's no budget impact. Our English language learner population keeps growing and growing, and they're in different levels, so I'd like to, somebody to make a motion to increase the ESL position from a .5 to a 1.0. Some move. Got a second.
Second.
A motion by Rich, a second by Cory. Discussion.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
The high school that, there's 25 kids at the high school, if I understand this correctly, they take, I guess the first thing is, they take a test, these kids, to get a score?
Yeah, so just to clarify, there's 35 kids at the high school, right? So they're 25 in level one to two, seven in level three to four, and then three in the last category, right? So it's those three groups together, and then based on what level you're in, you're entitled to different amount of services. So FEL stands for formerly English learners, so they're kids who tested out but still are entitled to some support. And level one and two are more beginners, and level three and four are slightly more advanced.
And this is a state test they take?
It's not, it's called the access test. It's not like the MTEL.
Right.
It's a test of language proficiency. And it's good because it flags stuff so we can intervene.
Okay, so minimum number of periods. That, you said we have seven in that group, does that mean that that, every period, those kids are together? If I, it says that they have seven maximum periods?
John, do you want to talk to this a little bit?
Yeah. So those are based on best practices and in class sizes. If those students would necessarily be together all the time, what the period means is a teaching period, not a student in a class period, but a teaching period.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think this is fairly straightforward, that we have the resources, and it'll, the goal is to move people through so they don't need to be classified that way, they don't need additional support, and I think this lets us, lets us do that. Anyone else? Roll call vote, Ann.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Cory.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And I, it's unanimous. Okay, great. So the next one was the thing we talked about last week that we shouldn't have talked about because it was embargoed, so we got this great, and now we can, it's unembargoed. All right, so we got this great grant from, or two weeks ago, we got this great grant from the state, and part of the grant is to fund a fellow to help us do deeper work around assessment. So we, the grant is going to pay for the position. We wrote a new job description because we've never had this role. That's in front of you, and the request is to approve this job description. It's two years, it'll be a big asset cost in moving this work forward. It's shared now as a full-time position, but there's the possibility, depending on current interest, we might split the position between two people, so they would be maybe .6 teaching and .4 working in this role, or vice versa, or .4 teaching and .6 working in the role. So if somebody would like to make a motion to approve this, that would be great. And I see this as a temporary position that we do for two years, funded by the grant, and then, and then we, if it's wonderfully impactful, we might have another discussion about continuing it, but it's not my intention to continue it.
There's not, it's not a requirement of the grant that we continue to fund it on our own?
It is not. Right, and I mean, the best thing to do would be for this person to put themselves out of a job because those practices become so embedded, we don't need the position anymore.
So this is different than the bar award that you announced on May 19th?
Yeah, the, yes, this is, this is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, rethinking grading, and we're part, we're one of five schools selected. But it's a big deal too.
Does this create an additional teacher position, or does it add responsibility to a current position?
There's funding for an additional position, but we might reallocate time, or we might, if two current teachers do it, and then we bring in another teacher to cover some of their responsibilities, or just reallocate responsibilities. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Got a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, motion was by Rich, second by Bill. Roll call, Ann.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane. Diane, are you still on with us? I'm not.
I heard her say yes.
Okay. Cory.
Aye.
Aye.
And I, could I ask you to stand this way? Whether Diane was on or not. Okay. So my last. My last of these, and apologies to the negotiations committee, and I explained that to them separately, but this is, a year ago, we increased the paraprofessional salary outside of the contract to address both the minimum wage issue and then sort of the ripple effect. Because we did that, we need to do it again. So we're proposing a slight change that's articulated in this. So for fiscal year '23, next year, the step one would go from 15 to 1550, step two from 1525 to 1622, and step three from 1575 to 1699. And then there's slight accompanying increases all through this, but as you get higher, it's less. We're having a really, we have a lot of paraprofessional vacancies, we're having a tough time recruiting people. This, plus what we did last time, plus the ability to have people start a little bit higher on the scale, make all the difference. So I strongly, strongly recommend that you vote to approve this. This is unusual that we're making a shift outside of typical contractual negotiations, but it's the time we're limited. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Got a second.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Ann, discussion.
So explain to me how it impacts FY '22?
No, this is FY '22. This is, right now, we're in FY '22, this is for fiscal year '23, so.
I'm looking at the settled contract rates and you have proposed changes, and there's changes to FY '22 on us.
The part that it says in green is what we had already changed for this year, and then the column to the right of it is what we're proposing to change for next year.
I think you explained that, I didn't understand it. Yes.
Great. Anyone else?
Yeah, how's this going to affect current employees? They will go up on the steps also?
Yes.
They don't go up, they go across, that's why we have to increase them.
Right, so they're not, Sean, they're not going up, they're going across. So the biggest increase is at the, at the beginning steps, and the smallest increase is at the top steps. Sharon did an analysis of it, and the district can afford to do this. Total impact of it's not particularly significant to the district, though it is very meaningful to the individuals.
I just want to make sure that the current employees are getting the benefit also.
Yeah, everybody is.
Being done both to reflect our market challenges as well as a catch-up from oversight that job put into place prior to this?
It wasn't really an oversight. We want to be above minimum wage, and then the bigger issue is, you drive between here and Great Barrington and you see 20 help wanted signs up, and places like Dunkin' Donuts were paying more than what we were paying in the old version of this. So even though our insurance is good, and it's a great benefit, we need to compensate people fairly to attract people to the role.
And so this is enough?
It's never enough, but this is good for now, and then we'll address the broader issue in future, more typical negotiations.
Their contract's up next year, right?
Yeah. Anyone else?
Is it, this is, I would assume, competitive with other districts? Or have we looked at that?
We have, we did a whole market analysis. Sharon, do you want to speak to it a little?
Typically, we do a market analysis of all school districts, and there are some that are higher, some are lower, but it puts us right in the market.
Great. Anyone else? Roll call vote. Ann.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Cory.
Aye.
Rich.
Yes.
And Nancy, are you on with us? Okay, so what I learned tonight is if I have six or so students come, everything gets passed quickly. So please come back often. So let me just take, we're going to move on now to what I really think is the meat of our night tonight, and is, I think it's going to be really interesting. So tonight, we're going to share some updates on our work in ninth grade this year. We're going to hear from students, then from staff, then a little video from two consultants, then Kristy, and then if there's anything else left to say, I might say it, but it might all be said by the time we get to me. There are really three chunks of work that we've been focusing on this year. De-leveling, and we'll talk about that, I don't love the name, but it's a chunk of work, proficiency-based assessments, and expanding student voices. We've had some successes, and we also have some areas for growth, and I'll give us context on it. And while the students are talking, to sort of see that as this great moment of expanding student voices. So I'd like to have you all come up. I can introduce you, but I'll let you introduce yourselves. You can stand, you can bring a chair, whatever, whatever works.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hannah Roller, I'm going by Hannah Velbom, it's Rolly Boyd, and Tessa Brock and Pauline. We just completed our ninth grade year, and we're here to present the data that we collected from 91 students in the freshman class. So we collected this data targeting what he did through things, proficiencies, leveling, and honor distinction, and we did it in two phases. Phase one was conducted on May 18th. We did a survey, and, I'm sorry, and this focused on the quantitative data. So it took place in the cafeteria, and we were refreshing on the content of the survey, what we were hoping to do with the survey, and where our information would be going. Then phase two focused on the qualitative data that happened following Thursday, May 27, and, 26, sorry. And we let freshmen facilitate small group discussions inside all eleven advisories. Ninth and 10th grade teachers were present and they were not, meaning anything was completely student-led. And that was all notes and quotes, and you will see that from our course. So we're about to start the presentation. Tessa's going to be the first, she's going to be talking about the class qualities and dynamics from all of them, talking about proficiencies and proficiency rubrics. Emma will let go, she's going to be talking about honors and leveling, and then I will wrap it up. And before we start, we want to make this very clear, we are fully in support of making minds academics more accessible for every student, and which is, of course, the mentioned goal of the system. The only other thing I have to say before we begin is that we ask that you hold your questions until we end, not that we include through this in a time of the enter. And also, at the end of our presentation, you will be handed a paper copy of the report that we have made, and in there, you will find all of our survey data, from like the Merle Cole, the numbers, the statistics, the features, and the hours.
Yep, so I'm going to be talking in particular about the discussion, not so much the surveys, not so much percentages, ratios. I'm going to be going over three categories. The first one is comfort levels in class overall, so we asked in the discussions, do you feel comfortable asking questions in class? And students claim that overall, they don't feel judged by their peers, they feel like they can ask questions in class, but they do sometimes feel judged by the teachers. And I think, I don't think that they claim that they don't feel comfortable asking questions when they expect to get wrong, and they feel like a wrong has a more be accepted. In particular, because the class overall is so far ahead of them, or the teacher is teaching a case that they can't keep up with, so they don't feel comfortable asking questions. And then the second category I'm going to go over is class productivity, which I think has been not great this year. Students claim that their teachers struggle with class management, which is really understandable because teachers are handling, anyways, they'll be handling 20-plus kids, but now they're handling kids who are all going in different directions, they're all learning at different rates, they're at different levels academically. So students found that in some of their classes at least, the teaching to the full work can just get crazy, basically, like kids are distracted, kids are distracting each other, kids are distracting the teacher, and that really prevents the teacher from teaching all the students well. And that's not anybody's fault, but that's what seems to be a big struggle this year. And then the last category I want to go through is students' relationship with their work. So we talked to a lot of students, and a lot of them had completely different perspectives, but overall, it seemed like some students claim that their classes are moving too slowly, and some students claim that their classes are moving too quickly. And for the students whose classes are moving too slowly, they often end up being the ones who help their friends along. So it's really not common for students to be passing only because of help from their friends, or cheating, basically. There's a lot of cheating, there's a lot of pictures of worksheets that get passed around, essays being sent around, and if a stronger student doesn't feel comfortable letting another student copy their work, it falls on their shoulders to teach them the work that they should be learning in class, but that they can't necessarily sacrifice time for. That's all I'm going to speak about right now, there's a lot more in the report that you guys are going to get later, so I just. Okay, so I'm going to take a little bit of time to talk about proficiency-based learning and the rubrics that come with that. So proficiency-based learning has been interpreted as an opportunity to move away from the stigma surrounding number grades and to allow everyone the ability to strive for excellence. These concepts have been integrated in a way that has caused many students confusion and left them asking what proficiency-based rubrics and learning are for. According to our data, 95.6% of the students in a freshman class ignore proficiency-based rubrics when trying to find their grade, and instead rely on power school for a number grade. For students who do use proficiency-based rubrics, there seems to be a consensus that proficiency-based grading was too inconsistent and confusing. What do each of the words actually mean, and how do they translate to number grades? How is a 94 different from a 95 in the excelling category? Having such a large margin of numbers within each proficiency category causes students to feel confused as to how their number is translated from the word grade. One student mentioned to us that in the past, number grades in the 90s were very common for them. Now, with the new term, excelling students, which are number grades that range from a 90 to 100 typically in the rubrics, must be getting everything correct and be going above and beyond the assignments. According to the rubrics, as the student mentioned, for many students, in order to get excelling, it's really hard. If you get something wrong, you can't get excelling, it's automatically proficient. Not only does this make students feel bad about themselves, but proficiency-based rubrics make some students feel like they're treated as younger than they actually are. In order for the students to be less confused, there needs to be a decision on what system MMRHS is choosing to go forward with. Working on proficiency-based scale while still having number grades is unfair to students and causes immense amount of frustration and stress. If MMRHS is looking to adapt to a proficiency-based grading system, no numbers can be used at all, or the system does not work. Students are struggling to find consistency between classes with proficiency rubrics and how they work. They feel that there is not enough consistency with the grading policies in general. In the students' eyes, they want more specific feedbacks within the rubrics, so they can better understand where they are falling on the proficiency-based scale when the number is given to them in their power school. Finally, a result from discussions with the freshman student body proved that there's a large consistency around the idea that proficiency-based learning has been successful in English and social studies departments, as the idea is to fully understand the material and build skills for writing and driving students to excellent. A 94 versus a 95 in an English paper is not that different, whereas in math and sciences, a 94 versus a 95 can be much larger, where the data, the information is more quantitative. Students feel that proficiency-based learning has been successful in the social studies and English departments, but less successful in math and sciences. When feedback is given, there needs to be more specific information in classes, such as math and science, where the numbers are more important. In order for things to run smoothly next year, a proposed idea from the student body would be to have math and sciences stay in number grades, and for English and social studies departments to fully adapt to a proficiency-based scale, doing well, allowing to all that. So that's just really how the students feel, they understand that we're not the ones making the decisions here, but we just want to let you all know how they feel. So I'm going to pass on the interval, just to talk a little bit about de-leveling.
Okay, so Yvette Brock said I'm just talking about de-leveling and honor distinction. So as many of you already know, the goal of de-leveling is to ensure that all students are being handled with a challenge across the board, and is to make sure that all students have the opportunity to be in classes, so have high expectations, so that all students can. so that all students can become proficient and have the opportunity to excel. It was also meant to get rid of the stigma of being labeled as a standard or a CP student as it is believed that these labels cause students to underestimate themselves and have low self-esteem. In an ideal world, this transition would make the ability to earn honor distinction more accessible to all students while still maintaining the same amount of academic rigor that the Monver curriculum has offered in past years. We need to work together to make sure that this happens. So one of the main issues that the ninth grade students identified was that it was almost always out of class assignments. The goal of de-leveling was to make work available to all students and making all honors work out of class assignments doesn't really achieve that. Many students have difficult at-home situations, which makes it even harder for them to earn honor distinction. There was a general consensus among students that if more honors work was in class, more students would engage in it. One student explained, "I didn't do honor distinction. If there's a test I'm taking and there's an honor distinction problem on the test, I will try to do it." So that proves that having the work in class pushes more people to try out honors assignments and challenge themselves. And like for students, if the work is right there, they're more likely to try and do it. Sorry. One time that honor distinction went extremely well was when a class was going into independent work and two different worksheets were offered. One was a standard CP assignment and the other was a more challenging honor distinction. Students were able to work simultaneously on these two different worksheets while still being challenged at different levels. A similar model for teaching at the level of class would look like this, like starting the entire class together and giving everyone a basic understanding of the subject and then splitting up into two smaller groups. One group beginning to work on an assignment and the other group diving into specifics of the subject and then later beginning a more challenging assignment. Students would be in full control of which group they worked with and would be able to change if they ever felt uncomfortable or if they ever felt too challenged or were not challenged enough. That's just one of our activities. But the thing that we want to stress the most is that the majority of the time, honor's work feels a little too much like a busywork and does not offer enough challenge or intrigue. Sometimes the work is hard, tedious, and other times the work just feels pointless. Many students want and need to be challenged in their academic classes. Honor's distinction should be a way for students to dive deeper into the work that is being taught. One student said striving for honors should be doing better on assignment rather than doing more. The amount of rigor that was offered in classes this year was insufficient and did not prepare students for upcoming AP courses. Towards the end of the year, many teachers stopped providing honor's work altogether. Some teachers said that they were doing this as a favor to students, but it may be a disservice. Honor's assignments and projects are necessary for students to be prepared for honor classes in years to come. We need to make sure that the quality of education and the culture of classes is improved rather than harmed by de-leveling and proficiency-based learning. Watching students and teachers leave because of this new system is demoralizing and erodes confidence in the education that Monument is providing. The reputation of our school is at risk if we do not work together to ensure that de-leveling and proficiency-based learning are implemented successfully. We are at risk of becoming the district in which students who can afford to opt into high schools will do so and families who cannot will choose to live in a separate district or choice into other schools. Monument is an amazing school with brilliant and hardworking teachers and there's such a positive culture among students and faculty. And there is also a really diverse student body. We cannot lose our school's reputation for excellence. All of these changes were made with the best of intentions, but we have to make sure that we are achieving what we set out to achieve. And now we are doing so without losing what has made Monument great for so long.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, the four of us wanted to acknowledge that what you just heard was very harsh and hard to swallow. So we want to take a second and just redirect your perspective to why we're here and what we're doing this for, which is to make next year's academics better across the board. In no way are we trying to target any specific teachers or any specific subjects or anything that did not go well this year or any faults that occurred. The ninth grade team is made of teachers who are phenomenal, brilliant, and extremely dedicated to every single student that they teach. We thank the teachers for their support in collecting the data and the completion of this report. And we are so, so thankful that they are willing to help put in the work to make next year and the rest of our year's better. So, the question is, where do we go from here? How do we take this data and use it to make sure that the following years reflect the academic rigor and potential that Monument has and can deliver to every single student? So, this system was designed so that every student is able to get more challenging work in more challenging classes. But, and Annabelle was just speaking to this. This does not mean that the students who need that academic rigor, who need that challenge, are forgotten. Sorry. When a student achieves honor distinction, it has to mean that they partake in work and learning that was richer and more complex than that of the average class. It cannot, it has to mean that the material, not the amount of work or the way the work looks or is presented, is richer and more complex than what is students who are not earning honor distinction are being taught. To deny students who crave more challenge, the opportunity to receive academic challenge is to deny academic rights. We cannot. Sorry, sorry. Students who needed more challenge in the freshman class observed that teachers are teaching down in their curriculum. Some of them are. The whole concept is called de-leveling, but we shouldn't aim to bring students into the middle of the academic scale if they are fully adept to do more and excel in an environment that is more aggressive. We should try to guide all of our students to a higher academic standing. It should be called level up. The students who dedicate everything to school and everything to academics cannot be forgotten as we try to lift up and support the students who do not or are elude. Of course, the students who are not as academically inclined or engaged are equally important. We cannot teach classes that are overwhelmingly difficult and expect all students to level that not all of them are academically adept to me. It is a simple fact that people learn as different pieces and work in different ways. And placing all students in the same classroom will leave some of them feeling inadequate and uncomfortable. In classes where teachers are teaching with more rigor, half of the students are trying to get by but cannot meet the workload or work requirement that they need to. This leads to unhealthy school habits, which Tessa highlighted. And the students who are struggling rely on installing students for homeworks, answering questions from the teachers, and sending pictures of completed worksheets. It is discouraging, I mean, I'm sure all of you have experienced something like this, to be in a place where everybody else can seemingly understand without any much effort, but you're being taught and you are struggling with that. We cannot forget what really matters. We cannot sacrifice the students and their educational needs for the ability to call Monument at the local school. The students of the freshman class do not have the time to wait five years for a fully functioning proficiency system. We have three years left and we need to get the academic challenge that we require next year. We cannot wait until the kinks have been worked out. We need it now. We have. We cannot expect students to reach their own academic potential and go into classes where they are going, colleges, where they're going to be challenged if they are not prepared for that. A big way we can do this is working on professional development. And in order to work on professional development, we need to put time in. Schools who have done this successfully have spent months and years training their teachers before the systems were even implemented. We cannot expect our teachers to be able to carry this out as well as they can if they are not given the tools and they need to do so. Speaking more specifically to the four of us, it's really, really scary to feel like we wasted a year and that we lost a lot of challenge. We don't want students to have to go and look outside of their classes for challenge. They should be challenged inside the classroom within their original places. And we need Monument to give us the challenge that we require now because we need high school to get us where we want to go.
So you folks feel confident that we presented tonight representing consensus of your class?
Of the students, yes.
I'd like to just say thank you.
I want to thank you so much. That is very brave of you. I know this can be scary. And I've been waiting for this. I've been wanting to hear this for months. So I really appreciate all of the time and consideration that you've put into this. And it's all important to hear. I definitely, I have lots of thoughts. I have lots of questions. I personally would like to hear a little bit from parents and teachers as well before I ask my questions.
I guess, I wonder, could you guys just really briefly tell us, like, you haven't just been working on this since May. Could you run us through, like, from the beginning of the school year, how did you guys kind of begin these conversations and get to reaching out and drawing the conclusions that you came to?
So all of us are, we like that. We like school, like being, doing good in school. And we like being challenged at school. And around February, I sent out a text to 310. I feel like I'm not being challenged. I think we should talk about this. So we met in the library after school. We just basically talked about everything we've been experiencing. We had the same experience. Then we went to Mr. Flynn. Mr. Flynn is that so, so helpful. He's the, like, key point of why we're here. And we talked to him for a while. We talked about, like, where we, just where we want to go in the future and how we were scared that this was not going to be the way to get there. And then he advised us to join the Student Advisory Board in an proficiency subgroup. And through that, we decided that the best way to reach out and get to it and give data was to get data from the students. So we organized a survey and then the discussions. We met with teachers.
And I think the other thing that we made sure to do, we had some calls earlier this week with people on YETZ, which is we have an adult partnership together. So something that we really want to make sure that you all know is this whole entire report that we've put together and all the work that we've been doing, we've been making sure to be staying connected with administration and teachers because if we want change to occur in the classroom, it's going to have to be with partnership between teachers and students. So that was something that we really made sure that happened throughout the whole entire process.
And kind of to from this point, like, this is not the end. For us, like, we are also willing to work with teachers and administration to come up with a new and hopefully better plan for next year.
I just had a question. First of all, thank you very much. I think it was very brave what you did and I really appreciate the firsthand knowledge that you gave us. My one question was, how many students would you guess average for each of your classes for the four main subjects? Math, science, social studies, English, like roughly, would you say?
I would say around 20, yeah.
Around 20, okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'd just like to say that I think this is a good example of what Monument has always stood for. Students who are willing to work to make change. You four represent, I think, a good cross-section of the entire student body. I like the fact that you reached out to more students than just your own classmates or your own immediate social groups. I think what you've done is to show what Peter said at the beginning is student voices and student leadership at its best. And I really thank for you to be poised as you are and to be willing to come here and have lots of adults looking at you and questions that will be raised. I think you've done what, in my opinion, as Rich said last year, this is the most significant change in Monument Mountain in my history with the district, and that's 51 years. We've never made a change like this. And I think it's important that we have heard from you, we'll hear from teachers, and that everybody kind of look at this and say, "Okay, things aren't going to change. I know you want, you know, next year, it would be good to pause maybe at the end of this year, look at it." And I like it because you're looking at assumptions. And I'm big on, what are the assumptions we have coming into this? What are the assumptions that have been proven? Okay, these are valid. What aren't valid? And where can we do some tweaks? And it's always good to look at your assumptions and to see are they grounded and what are they grounded on? Okay? So I thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would just say, I think it's actually a little disturbing that it's the last day of school and this is the first time we're hearing about sort of what is going on and how these students don't feel as if they're prepared for next year and feel that this year was a waste. Zoe and I are guilty of it. We give a report every week of the good news items at Monument. It's on our agenda, good news items. I just feel like we don't necessarily talk about the reality enough or the truth or have honest conversations enough. They're right. The last senior class had four different schedules during their time at Monument. There's this common feeling among students that the top-down perspective is that with time, things will change. Over 10 years, things will get better. Over the course of it, principals or vice principals or superintendents, whoever's time in office, things will progress. But these freshmen have three years left. My class has one year left. So that's 25% of their time at Monument to get out what they need. So this is really a really scary thing. It was an amazing presentation. I don't think I could do that. But definitely not something that is good news.
So talking about assumptions, I would say you guys learned incredible about this year. You're standing up here and not only identify the problem, but you look at what, how do we get the data? How do we get the information? How do we use that? How do we get that to other, the people who will make decisions? I would say you just passed freshman year with.
You were great at grade one tonight, isn't it?
Yeah. You know, it may not have learned in the way that you expected to learn. It didn't learn because some teacher fed it to you. It didn't learn in the way you learned in fifth grade. That's not how you learned. But you learned as an adult learner and identified a problem and then figured out how to look at it and how to do something about it. And that will go farther for college than anything else and in the work, even farther. Because that's what life is. It's not a teacher teaching you, this is what you're going to learn this year. And you go in at the end and say, "Yeah, I got the hand. So I must know something." It's not it.
Can I just ask you to do one thing? Can you sort of get into this? Can you talk about how many Zoom calls you were on with each other and grownups during the year? How many times you checked in with the YETZ people? How many times you met with Mr. Flynn or Ms. Farina or me? Like, it's really unusual that, like, you and I were sitting in, or the four of you and I were sitting in a conference room for an hour having a conversation about your report. Can you give people some sense of process?
Yeah, I would say that starting in the beginning here, of course, it was a little bit less. But towards like halfway point and towards the end, we were having meetings at least three or four times per week with different committees. Anywhere from talking with our guidance counselors, talking with the ninth grade team in the mornings or having a call with Dr. Dillon or anyone in the district or administration. So we definitely took a lot of time and effort to put into this.
And I think that we made a lot of, that sounds like dramatic, but, you know, we skipped advisory periods. We skipped study halls. I mean, I didn't go to my first period periods yesterday because I had a meeting for every period. I think that, like, the past month, this has affected all of us since then, constantly.
Just one quick, I mean, what, I feel like I had the opportunity to do extraordinary students, very similar types of independently student-initiated work and never had four students as ninth graders do something that's extraordinary. That's one. Two, is that when we set up our mission statement, we were committed to all of us, meaning faculty, administration, Two, is that when we set up our mission statement, we were committed to all of us, meaning faculty, administration, students, being everything that we described in that mission statement, including the courageous learners. And so there wasn't a person that's been engaged in this process, isn't demonstrating courage in their ability to be able to evolve into getting better. Like, we haven't created an environment that tries to keep the faculty safe from the students, right? And making sure it's nice and clean and like regimented. Like, we know that we're involved in an iterative process. And what we're asking of them, as students, is to have a growth mindset and be open to learning. And we're, we are open to the same thing. So this is really about what do we do, how do we get better? And having this opportunity and the process that these kids engaged in, that was supported, and I also want to make sure to point out, by the ninth grade team, specifically Kathy Erickson and Beth Cook coming in at 7:30 morning to help set aside two advisory periods for the ninth graders so that they could be dedicated to this ninth grade town hall that these guys built. First was a whole school, a whole class survey where they presented in front of their whole class, had the follow-through survey. And then the second one was actually in which they got in small groups that they facilitated with the support of all the classmates that are training the YETZ support calls. And then, and the ninth grade teachers also brought the 10th grade teachers to be observers of those conversations. And there's been follow-up from administration, including Christine, John, and Peter, to ensure that their voice is being heard, a lot of those changes that we tried to make. And then also follow-up from the teachers in terms of planning for something. So like, you know, the length to which this is, where people have gone, is kind of extraordinary. And actually exemplify some of the best features of our school in so many ways, there's still very much left. So they've inspired a lot of people right now at a point in time where we're already spent. But they find a way to data up us in this process.
So what I think we'll do now, if it's okay, is we'll shift a little and Beth Cook and, is Elsa coming up too? Oh, so Beth Cook and Elsa are coming up. They're both biology teachers, ninth grade teachers, they've been working really hard on this and they're going to share an additional perspective and we're just going to keep digging deeper and deeper into this.
So, yeah, I think I'm probably going to approach most of the presenting, Elsa's here to just sort of help to fill in any gaps or if you have questions that maybe she can answer more fully, she's going to jump in. I really appreciate Sean mentioning courageous learners because it makes me think a lot of times we think of our students and we're trying to inspire them, but also as teachers this year, I think that would be a really good mantra for ourselves in going through this process and this initiative and trying to make sure that we do the best work for our students. So I have the pleasure of teaching all of them and the one that I don't teach, who's in my advisory, so I'm just very proud of all of the work that they've done. And you know it's something when your students email you at nine o'clock and are like, oh, we're on for our 7:30 and eight o'clock. So, yes, so I just want to acknowledge that. So like Peter said, we're just going to touch on the ninth grade teacher experience. We're going to kind of take you through what went well, what were some of our challenges and then some of our thinking in terms of next steps. So if you asked the ninth grade team what went well, I think you would have a unanimous vote. That the time and space that was intentionally allocated for us to work together as a team with shared students was the number one win for us. This is a different structure, I think at the middle school, this is a common approach where teachers meet in teams to discuss students, common students, and to, you know, work on best practices. And at the high school level, that typically hasn't been the case. Historically, we meet as departments and we don't have a lot of time to meet with teachers who share common students. So that was a big transition this year and a new model for the high school. And we felt like that was invaluable to us. So in that time, we planned classroom visits. Teachers were regularly in and out of other people's classrooms. It was a regular practice, kids would see us coming, you know, Kathy Erickson would hop into bio or English or social studies. Mike Powell, who is our guidance counselor for the ninth grade team, would be coming in all the time. And so we really set up for ourselves this sort of inter-visitation where people were cutting in and out and giving each other feedback. So that was really great. There were teachers who swapped classes for periods of time. So for, I think, a few days to a couple of weeks at a time, they would swap. Elsa and I got up community to do a lot of team teaching together as well as with another biology teacher. And I feel like for the first time this year, I was actually able to know all of the freshmen because I was in all of the science classes, which was a really unique opportunity. That time that we had, the time and space we had, allowed us to sort of collaborate and have really important discussions on how to get our students to sort of rediscover what it means to be a student after being out of the classroom and in these hybrid and online and virtual and everything in-between scenarios. And really rediscovering skills that they would need to be successful in school again. And our work during the summer really focused on that. Specifically, as a team, we discussed communication. How are we going to get our students to get back into the mode of communicating with each other? Whether it was verbally, listening to each other, speaking, making models, representing their thoughts to their peers. And so we shared strategies, we looked at student work. It was really awesome to see a social studies assignment and student work in that social studies class or look at a math test. That's something that we really haven't done. And so to be able to see what our colleagues are doing and what our students are experiencing in different classes was really helpful and helping us to become more aligned and collaborative than we've been in the past. So the second, so the first would be time and space, that went really well. I think that from what you heard from the freshmen, they really well articulated very well that using proficiency-based grading while having this numbers-based system is really conflicting and problematic. It's probably, it was affirming to hear when they said it. We were all like, oh, that's exactly how we've been feeling, like, phew, they feel the same way. We felt like that was a really good thing to hear from them and to hear Bronny's suggestions about, like, sort of what some of the challenges were and the suggestions were really compelling for us. So where it went really well was, many teachers reported that they were using the proficiencies to restructure their curriculum and the way in which they were going about their teaching. So typically at the high school, right, if I'm a biology teacher, I'm focused on my biology content. And then I have places where I'm sort of interpreting skills, right? Like analyzing data, making models, interpreting data, making claims based on evidence, things like that. And in proficiency-based learning, it's really the skill that's at the forefront and you're really intentional about that skill so that students can then take that skill and bring it to their chemistry class next year, their physics class, their AP class, or to their English or social studies class that year. So it's much more skills-focused approach. And that was really helpful in terms of our goal of trying to get students to transition back into high school after having such a disrupted sort of experience the last two years. So the last really thing that I think we felt went well was not having a pre-label on students when they walked into our building as freshmen before we even met them. I think a lot of us felt uncomfortable with the practice of teachers from different schools just labeling kids as honors and CP and standard and with no real ability to move once you were there. And so I think all of us feel that we're at least giving every student the opportunity to engage in that work. And I think, as the ninth grade student said, it, I think there have been some bumps along the road in terms of how we allowed that to happen. But I think there has been a lot of clarity about like what has worked, what hasn't worked, and how can we propel more students forward. Like, I don't know who, which one of you said it, but like introducing more rigor for everybody, right? Like, and I think that that, getting rid of that pre-label has been a really big win for students at the high school.
Is there anything else? I just wanted to mention that I was talking to me other day a student, but you, how did I learn this? I don't remember. And I said, well, that's my magic, you don't worry, I'll do it, right? So when I was listening to you and it killed me, that last sentence when you said, we wasted our first year. And we have been learning about proficiency-based learning in science, it's called science and administrative practices. It's the same thing. And believe it or not, whether we use the right rubric or not, we have been using that already. And I just want to read to you, we have eight, I want to read to you four and see if you think that these kids learned this, whether we did it or they carried from money or whatever. But analyzing and interpreting data, constructing explanations and designing solutions, engaging in argument from evidence, and obtaining evaluated and implementing key information. Maybe it wasn't in biology. The other thing I wanted to say is that last summer, the ninth grade team spent over 70 hours working together, believe it or not. And we've learned about what differentiation looks like, what universal design for learning looks like and what proficiency-based learning looks like. And we were really scared by in June, we were extremely confident by September, and we were defeated by December. Why? Because in June, we knew nothing. In August, after 70 hours, we were like, we got this. And December, we felt like, we thought we got this, but we didn't. But I also believe that I'm also a learner and the same way I see students transitioning and doing an amazing growth. I think, I hope that I still have the capacity to be that person. So even though it was extremely hard for me to see how much I wasn't, I wasn't the teacher I wanted to be, I also think that I still can be that teacher and I think I still can learn. And I think that that really moves back to the next topic, I guess. Well, it didn't go great, and don't worry, we have the solutions.
So in terms of our challenges, I think that you guys hit on the head with being in this hybrid system, right? Like, the goal of proficiencies is for students to get specific targeted feedback on the skills and the content that we want them to know. And when, it doesn't matter what kind of rubric you have, how detailed it is, how nuanced it is, or how vague it is. If at the end of the day, students are still jumping on their phones and checking to see what does that actually mean? Like, what does Ms. Cook actually mean when she said I got, like, did a great job and, you know, got excelling? Or did a great job but only got proficient? And so I think that it has been a real conflict with each other, trying to have a system where you want to value and you want to promote discussion with students about where they are in their learning, what steps we need to take, when, at the end of the day. It's what's the difference between a 95 and a 96? And I don't think that a lot of teachers at the high school can honestly tell you that answer. What is the difference between a 95 and a 96 on something that's like a quality assessment? Not just like a multiple choice test, right? Because you could easily figure that out. So I think that once this numbers go away, I think it's going to make a lot of things better. It's going to just, it's going to force the fact that, oh, so now the conversation is about what am I learning? What are my next steps? Why was this so great? Not that 100 or a 95 isn't great, but why? Like, what made it great? Was it just memorizing information or was it that you did something really specific? And can we like name it so that then you can do it again or do it better the next time or transfer that to something else? So I think that would be the number one. There was also a lot happening this year. I think teachers were really excited about coming back from having this really interrupted schooling for kids. I know for my personally, it was really hard to sit in a classroom, an empty classroom for nine months. I was one of those lucky people who lives in Mill River, who didn't have any internet. So I was either in my car outside of the Mill River Public Library with like 15 other people. But most of the time, I was at school and it was really isolating. So I think that we were just so happy to come back to school and we had this tremendous task of like transitioning kids back into school life. And then on top of it, there were a lot of these other things that we all felt, I think, had maybe mixed feelings about, but were willing to try to figure out how to implement all of them into our classrooms. And it was just really hard to figure out which one do I spend most of my time and energy on? So just trying to figure out what, where the focus should be to make it more intentional and to make it better for students. Challenges would also be accepting that it's an iterative process. This whole thing is an iterative process. That the consultants that we were working with, Tanya and Gretchen, who you will hear from, talked to Kathy Erickson and I the other day and said, you guys are so hung up on your product. They're always so hung up on your product and we're going to force you to think about the process. And so as teachers, we want, you know, we have a tough audience. We have like all these students sitting in front of us and it's really hard to go in there and be like, I may not have all of the answers to all of this right now and I'm going to try this out on you guys and I'm going to modify it for next year. Like, that was the conversation I had with my freshmen about their final projects, about how I was changing the rubric. But they didn't want me to change the rubric for the freshman next year. I think they wanted them to suffer a little bit, I'm not sure. But yeah, this idea that it's also easier to talk about things in theory than in practice. And I think good teachers are really good at knowing when they're going to get hung up and what the stumbling blocks are going to be. And this has been a humbling experience because it feels like until you use the rubric, until you do the project, until you start grading, it's really hard to like.
Yeah, and so you see the confusion in your students and you're like, ooh, I know I did that. I definitely know that this thing that they're like, what, this is confusing? You're like, I know I did it, but now I see that it wasn't clear to you. And I keep saying that this was a necessary step. Maybe there was a way to make this easier for them and us, but you have to start somewhere. And it was, it was very humbling, it was very frustrating to not be the awesome teacher. You can be in other setting, but I think you can be expert in everything. And it's a really good experience for all of us. I'm sorry that maybe we went out to this expectation that you guys had, but I think it was a good first step.
So next steps would be to be more focused and intentional. Christine has talked to us a little bit about targeting, having some more targeted parameters for the ninth and 10th grade teams moving forward for next year that I think people are craving that in their work. Granders around like honors distinction or grading in general. Kathy Erickson said to me, we want to make those sort of, those positive things that happened this year, that happened in little spurts, more regular and more consistent. And I think that's like a good way of freezing it. We're really looking forward to growing our relationship with Tanya and Gretchen, who are the consultants, the coaches that came in. They came in for nine weeks with us at the end of the school year. Kathy Erickson and I arranged all of the visits, teachers volunteered. I mean, it's pretty impressive that in June, on the last, like, week of normal classes, that teachers like, yes, have Gretchen and Tanya come in and I want to meet with them. And they were able to give us feedback, but also just give us a space to process for someone who was a little bit outside of the school and not so entrenched in the work that we were doing. So we're really looking forward to working with them more this summer. We're really looking forward to the ninth and 10th grade team, having more people cooks in the kitchen, like, just trying to like work through things, working horizontally and vertically. So that's something we're really looking forward to. And again, I think just really treating this as an iterative process and working as a team to sort of.
I just want to explain, I don't know if you understand what Beth, when she says horizontally vertically, what she means is horizontally would be as a ninth grade team. But then for the first time, we will this summer have the opportunity to align vertically within departments. So our hope is the product that the students see is that now the following year, the ninth grade are going to have the same words, the same numbers being used across the ninth grade, but also that all the students in the building are going to have the same skills, the same practices, proficiencies across departments, being targeted, being, so using the same language. So those two directions are fundamental for going into that area, yeah.
So maybe we pause now for some questions to Beth and Elsa. Anybody got any?
Will Gretchen, and unfortunately I'm blanking on the other.
Tanya.
Tanya, will they accompany the team throughout the entire school year or just the summer?
That's part of what I'm going to talk to, so I'll answer your question when it's.
Perfect. Other questions or reactions?
I'd like to ask you both a question. You came from a system which was very different than what you've experienced this year, okay? In your areas particularly, it was probably very difficult to suddenly go from all honors to now a far-ranging. What, how did you perceive that yourself? And what do you feel was your own personal challenge in that? And how has that been addressed or, or not addressed? And how do you feel you're gonna deal with that?
Okay, um, so we were, I'm not really sure who decided that it doesn't matter at this point, but we started the year asking students to identify themselves as honors, not honors. So we started giving them assignments. Do you want to do the honors? Here it is. Oh, you don't wanna do it? Then we hold on. Which we realized that it was a huge mistake because by, we didn't put them in boxes, but they put themselves in those boxes, right? So at the end of the day, they were boxed. And uh, by doing that, the honors wasn't publicly available for them to try to challenge themselves and to say, well, actually, I was able to do it. So we have been thinking about this a lot. I would say that took a good chunk of our conversations. Um, what science has decided is next year, quarter one, all honors is going to be hidden. They're not going to know what work is for honors and what work is not for honors. So by the end of the quarter, you will see, hey, did you know that you got it? Because I think that uh, students label themselves, and they probably can do more than what they think they can. So by just hiding it, the first quarter, I think we give, we open the, the field. From then on, we think, we want to put honors as a world-led learner is a combination of content, of skills, of habit of work, of perseverance, of going the extra mile, some of those things. So we don't want honors distinction to be one of those. So we wanted to do as, sometimes I'm going to specifically say, this is an honors distinction. You can choose to do it or not. It's not going to, uh, if you choose not to do it, that doesn't mean that you won't get awarded with that. And other times, it's going to be hidden. Other times, it's going to be a number of tasks, this is honors. So we plan to mix it up because I think it's a combination of them eventually, once they have the confidence of knowing, oh, I just need to do it quarter one, is a combination of willingness and giving back confidence and having that perseverance. So that's our rough plan.
I don't know, Bill, if you were asking more about like, the idea behind getting rid of the honors classes.
No, I was just, what was your personal challenge in, in making the transition? Because it's a, it's one heck of a transition.
I really felt strongly that getting rid of the standard and C P level classes was important. Um, and as much as students who are at a higher level felt like maybe they weren't challenged, I really feel strongly that students who were in these classes this year really were challenged much more than they would have been if they were separated and put into a smaller class of, of students that had like customer ability or mindset. So I think that this year wasn't my best work in terms, I think the biggest highlight was that we're gonna be really consistent, and we're gonna do it this way, and the way that we chose to do it. It's great to be consistent, but if it's a bad system, uh, then it pretty much blows up in your face. So I think, you know, by February, we had figured out that we needed to incorporate it more into the classroom. We were trying to make assignments similar, like with that added tweak. It wasn't more all the time, it was different sometimes. And so I think, once we figured that out, and I remember Hannah coming up to me one day and just being like, oh, that assignment was so, that was like good, that's what you need to do. And I remember being like, oh, okay. So like, just having that feedback from someone and hearing what's working. Um, I, I didn't mention that, like, one of the next steps also is looking back at that student data and working with the students on, you know, we put a lot of pressure as a team to try to figure out, okay, what should honors distinction be? But we have like the best data source in front of us, which are the students who under, like, went through the honors distinction process in every class, who can give us some real feedback on, on what worked and what our next steps will be. So I feel like we're all really hopeful. I think the challenge, the challenge was like, like, having the right amount of rigor for everyone to keep everyone happy.
And we never want, not, not limit anyone behind, but the wrench was bigger.
Um, I just wanna bring up something that they'd mentioned, which was this cheating thing. Which obviously, if you copy somebody's paper, that's a form of cheating. But if kids are helping each other and teaching each other, I know for myself, the highest way to learn a subject is to be able to teach it to someone else. And to really, somebody who really doesn't get it and help them work through it so that they get it. And you've learned way more than you thought you would, than you thought you were. But it just seems that probably is, but could be much more of a tool so that there isn't this sense of, I have to do this, so therefore I have to find somebody who's gonna share their work with me.
Yeah, and I don't know, you know, when um, the group brought that up to us earlier in the week, I don't know if, if the cheating is necessarily a product of this, of this kind of. I believe initiative.
That could be my question.
Yeah, I, I really think, I think it.
Gretchen and I know.
Yeah, you know, I think it's, I think it's. Like COVID schooling, where we did have things maybe a little bit less rigorous. And I think just getting kids back on track, I think it's difficult. I don't know. I mean, it very well could be. I just, that was a question I had, like, wondering if I could turn back time and, and give that survey before the pandemic, like, what would it?
One, one thing that, um, looking on the bright side, uh, the, the idea of proficiency-based learning is that the formulas are, the worksheets, is the work they do in class, is not truly created. It's just given feedback, you are proficient or you are not. And so we hope that when you don't have sticks up, I'm going to get a bad grade. You're more honest about your answers because there's nothing to lose. But you also know that if you cheat on that format, when it comes to the summit, you won't be cheating because it's in front of the teacher, right? It's a test. So we hope that by giving feedback on the format where with no gray manatee, they will be incentivized to do the right thing when it comes to the learning for the test. So that might take care of themselves, just by the nature of our transition.
Right, that's right. And it's the kids, the students getting that too, right? Because everybody's been trained, do the work and hand it in. Now you're done. Do the work and hand it in, and you're done. So even if I copied it from somebody else, I handed it in, so now I'm done. It is like, yeah, check out the box.
Hannah, you had.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. Okay, I know that's what interrupted you guys. I think, just to clarify our point on that one, um, in testing, but we were a non-recount, that's a result of proficiencies. And I definitely think that is in part, I mean, everything we've done this year is also a part of COVID pandemic and how that's raised us. But I do think that our point on that was that students have know who the other students who are excelling in the classes are. And if you're friends with the students, it's really easy to go to them and be like, hey, can I have a picture of your worksheet I haven't got time to do tonight? It's really easy to get that worksheet. And so that was kind of our point, that it's making some students, it's, I don't know how to rephrase that, if that makes sense, but it's making like the students who are struggling.
That has been happening in school forever.
I was.
Right, it's like seventy-five years, it was happening.
That's why I had my way. She helped you. I'll just, I had a study hall in second period, I'll never forget it. Uh, it was a group of kids, and one of the kids asked me to marry him, uh, five years later, asked. I had to attend his wedding and do that license stuff and marry him and his wife, or even his friend, whatever it is. Um, and they used to sit there, and um, the, the key word then was we're doing group work. And Christie remembers that we're doing, um, it was, there was some educational term that we called, we just call it, oh, that's group work. Um, shared learning, that was the, 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 the educational term, shared learning. And then the kids would sit there, and one kid would do the algebra, I believe it was, and suddenly the sheet would go around. And I would count it, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven kids. And I said, oh, Todd, what are you doing? And he, he looked at me and he said, well, I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing the algebra. And I said, well, yeah, but you're giving the sheet to Nick, who's giving the sheet to Todd? And he said, oh, Mr. Fields, it's, it's, it's group work, it's shared learning. It's shared learning. So there's other terms.
So I know Claire.
Claire, I was just gonna say that that, that you're the, when you're pointing out, I feel like with some intervention and some training, you can turn that problem into an opportunity, right? Um, and then the other piece, I know, Bill, you mentioned kind of this being a well-represented sample, and I kind of disagree with that, and I don't think it is. So I would love to hear from the teachers, if you can be the voice of some of the students, both i- if there's a positive that you can point out, as well as a place where there was a missed opportunity, but just for some of the other students in the grade.
So their report, when you see it, you're gonna be like blown away. It's fourteen pages, it's awesome. Um, and they have some more representative, um, they have some more data from different students. Um, you know, the last day of school, I'm trying to like get some information from kids about their experience just in bio. And I just, I just, I was telling them, I said, in the previous years, um, in honors biology, I could not ask my students to make the connections that they made this year. And um, one of my students actually dressed up as a banana on the last day of school and stood there in a banana costume. And I said, everyone needs to go around the room and tell me one way is connects to bio, somebody who learned in bio. And every kid was able to come up with something. And it was just, I just, I think that there has been for so long this focus on the content and not so much on the skills of connectedness or interconnected thinking. Um, and I, I think that in terms of rigor, what we asked students to do in bio this year was really difficult. Um, and yeah, I, I, I just think that there were students where it was definitely challenging for them. And I think that, you know, uh, in the beginning of the year, we had students creating models. That was like a big piece of our work to explain a phenomena. And I remember, and we looked back at the first models we asked them to make, and we realized we gave them like no scaffolding at all. And then we quickly realized that like some kids needed it and some kids didn't. And then we gave it to everybody to either use or not use. And um, in this last project, we let students decide how much support they needed. So we were able to give students like these students not much support because they opted to not have that support. And then we had sort of an intermediate and like a really supported uh, piece of work that would help students to, to do what we were asking everyone to do. So I do feel like I asked students to do things that I typically wouldn't have asked them. And I do think that there was a, a lot of challenge. Um, and I also do think that there are ways for us to up the ante for students next year.
Um, what I would like to add is that um, typically fundamentals classes were ten, twelve kids. This year, they're on levels, everybody's mixed, in classes of twenty class kids. Um, where if you do average, three, four would have been tagged as fundamentals, right? So what we experienced is that the classes weren't fully mixed because they are being tracked somehow, it seemed that. But so there were classes that overall were being weaker than others. So there was a particular class that I had that had a huge range. And every other day, Beth would come and co-teach the thing. So what that meant is that the day Beth was there, and it wasn't like I was the lead teacher and she was not. It really depended, it was very fluid, but what it meant is that typically her or I could take five kids and say, okay, that's ret teaches, that's, let's do pre-teaching. Let's remove this, this assignment, whatever. So the difference when she was around was nine a day for everybody. Because also, if you're alone there and you're trying to reach everyone, those kids probably don't get any of me because I'm, I'm busy, you know, with those other five. So by us splitting, the lower five would get what they needed, and the other teacher would be available for the rest. So of course, that brings a question of, is more teachers, are more teachers needed? Or is the teacher configuration should change or, and it's an open question. But I do, I can tell you that that was a positive, when she was there, and a big difference when she wasn't.
And Christie allowed us, like, we were actually scheduled to team teaching classes that, once we got in there, we're like, we really don't need this in these classes. And she allowed us to sort of create our own schedule amongst the bio teachers to figure out where the need was. Um, as Elsa's talking, I think to myself, well, we could have also have done that in the other way, which is pulling, using a team teacher to pull students to work more deeply on something. And, and to be honest, that's something we didn't do. And that may have been a misstep for us in terms of giving both ends of the spectrum an equal amount of our time, really, and resources, so.
Okay, I think one of that one question, and I think it's just Chris, I think somebody already said it. So do you feel the fact that the proficiency-based learning and the de-leveling, which implemented the first year out of COVID, had a negative impact on implementation?
I think there was a lot happening. And I think if we were doing one thing at a time, I think it would have been, made it feel more like, okay, we can do this, we can laser focus it on this, and we can do it really well. Um, I think naturally, regardless of what people are telling us we need to do in your own classroom, you sort of just decide that, okay, this is where I'm gonna take it and run with it, and everything else is, I'm gonna do the best I can when I can. But like, the reality is, I'm gonna just use my professional judgment and do it here. I think that I would have said at the end of the year, it was a mistake to do it this year because it was so overwhelming. But then when I'm looking at the feedback and like what went well, our goal when we set out to do this was to help students transition back into school from COVID. And I wasn't at all concerned that my eighth graders coming in um, as freshmen, didn't know what a cell hemorrhaging was, or didn't know what a rhinitis did. That's okay, like, I can work with that. It was more about the skills that they were missing. And so I admit that while there were times when I was very frustrated and overwhelmed, I think that the skills piece was actually, like, made a lot of sense because that was what we needed to kind of work with our students on in that moment, this year. And we're really looking forward to like next year, having kids in the classroom for the second year in a row like in front of us and working together. So I choose.
So my follow-up question is, do you think the, the process of re-implementing the kids from COVID, which was a project in all four grades, was hindered or benefited from the implementation?
I think benefited.
That's what I think too.
Yeah, because it didn't really focus on the content, it focused more on the skills again. And I think took some of the pressure off at some, and I think kids needed that coming back, so.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is transition. I wanna really thank.
I just wanna ask one more question. It was really about some of all, it's an issue of our time. We need more time, I think we need more time. So my question, and first of all, I wanna thank you both for presenting tonight, as well as for taking on the challenge, um, you know, and teaching something completely in a different way, new, um, you and the entire ninth grade team. I really, you know, it was a huge leap of faith, and I appreciate it. And um, uh, you know, all of you by reputation have excellent reputations, are great teachers. So um, it's great that we're starting off with that, um, positive. My question is, do you feel in this system, you'll be able, at some point, to be able to satisfy the needs of both the high-end academic learners, as well as the middle, as well as the low end? Do you think that is possible?
I think so. I think that some of the practices that we've had in the past have been targeted, like, oh, just kind of think for the middle, design for the middle, and what we're learning and what's come up several times is actually, that's not what you should be doing. You should be targeting the two ends of the spectrum, and then the kids in the middle will benefit from both of those. So I think that, I don't think we did it well this year.
And I hope, and I hope we can do it well next year.
We will do it better, we will give it a process. I think it'll be better though. I think that there is definitely, we will not be repeating history next year in bio and in math. I think like everyone has, like, when Christie asked us about our summer work, I think we all had pretty clear direction on what we wanted to do, and I think that's a really good sign because I think it shows that we have thought about it, reflected on it, and, and wanted to get to doing the business of making it happen for the kids next year, so.
Great. So just to follow up, so um, how many years do you feel it would take for you to become, feel like you're personally are reaching all these levels of students? I mean, I know it's the best guess, but do you think in the next year? I mean, I know it's the best guess, but do you think in the next year, two years?
I don't, I don't think anyone would agree with what I'm going to say, so I speak only for me. The time thing, when I started teaching AP, everybody told me three, and I agreed.
Okay.
It was the third year, and I was like, yes, I know what I'm talking about, and I'm ready for any question. And I anticipated problems. I can see myself being confident after my third, but I.
I was literally just gonna say the same thing with AP.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for sure, it's like you feel really good after your third year. And then I can also say that it's my eighth year at Monument and my sixth year teaching AP. And we decided to like redo AP, because that's what we wanted to do, and we felt like it would best serve students, and, and I don't think it harmed them. And I think they were a little skeptical at first, because it was a different approach. But I, you know, the feedback that we got, I think was really good with it. So I, I think it's, it's going to be better next year. And I think, I don't, in terms of a timeframe, um, I would say, it's just like anything. Like, you need that time to just work through it. I, I, but I don't think it harmed. I don't think it harmed.
Okay. And my last point is, you said you average like twenty-plus students per, per class, in the real class. If that number was less, say somewhere in the twelve, fourteen, or fifteen range, do you think that would improve things significantly, a little bit, not at all?
Significant, yeah. It's a huge difference. The group dynamics, the, yes, it's a huge, huge difference. And, and actually, we have seen in the days when we had a lot of kids kept in safe with COVID. Those days were like, wow, I, I, I feel like.
I feel like it really tended to everyone. I had a lot of kids checking. I don't mean that that's, that's a happy way of.
No, no, it makes complete sense.
Yeah. I think also depends about the team teaching too. Like, when I was in Elsa's class, of probably, there were probably twenty-three in there. And then in, in Miss Downers, um, there were probably eighteen or nineteen. And I, so I don't think, I don't know so much about the number, but having two adults in the room, not two teachers, not paras, but two teachers who are comfortable with like the fluidity of what it takes to like, in the moment decide, okay, this is what we're changing, like on the fly.
Yeah.
Um, is really helpful. So I think that, two.
I just want to be clear. When you said there was two, did you combine both their classes?
No.
Or forty kids with two teachers, or you're just, you're just two teachers with twenty-three?
Yeah, yeah.
You would put two teachers, twenty-four kids, above one teacher with twelve kids?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yes. Um, the last thing I want to say is, sorry to be.
No, no, it's all good. Talk as much as you want.
You know, as a teacher, you like to use examples, and I like to use examples that are normally able to sign sometimes, because I think it, it, it take away, it takes away the nerdiness of it sometimes. Anyway, so I explained this to someone who, I think it was my husband, I don't know, someone who was my intitutean. Um, when we were talking about proficiencies and reporting proficiencies and numbers. I said, in two thousand two, I'm from Spain, two thousand two, um, December thirty-first, they decided to transition from pesetas to euros. So that night, everybody gets drunk. And so in the middle of the night, you have pesetas in your pocket, and you pay, and you get, are given back euros. And you have no idea if the change is right, because you don't know, the, the rate was, one euro was one hundred sixty-six point seven pesetas, so impossible. So what the government had established was that they would give us six months to pay in either coin and get change in euros. And by February, they said, oh, we're changing the rules. Pesetas are bond. Because everybody was getting so crazy, like, I think they would get to the supermarket, and I mean, how are you gonna pay? Well, I have six euros and two thousand pesetas. It was so confusing. And when they said, okay, February, you're done, I'm like, yes. After one month, we were done. So I can't wait to the moment when we move to letters, or numbers, or words, but give me one. I think that would be much easier.
Okay, so. A couple things in addition, I want to reiterate what Jason said, that echoes what Sean said, that echoes our mission. Uh, thank you to Beth and Elsa so much. Like, total example of being courageous and putting yourself on the line. And you're, you're exceptional, because you're presenting it tonight, but you also represent ten other exceptional people who, who did similar, similar work. Uh, so, uh, I really appreciate that. Um, what we're gonna do now, in a sec, Christie's gonna show it, but, uh, we talked about, the weird thing about public schools is they're public, but the work of public schools aren't always explicit and public. So we brought in these two really neat coaches, uh, Tanya and Gretchen, who are professors at Eastern Connecticut State University, to work on how to meet students where they are, right? The jargon is around differentiated instruction or universal design for learning, but how to teach a wide range of students, uh, and they did some really neat work. They, um, would drop in on classes, meet with teachers, talk, have things. And then finally, uh, in, in addition to all the other feedback they were giving, they, they made a video. So we got permission, a video to the teachers about the business. So we got permission from them to share a little clip, like three, three and a half minutes, of that feedback, and, and we're sharing it. One, it's like seventh inning stretch, right? We're an hour and a half into a meeting. We need something to energize us, and they're like totally full of energy. And, and two, because it, it highlights, uh, some of the complexity and depth of work that's happening. So I'm gonna try to change, it's, it's a little complicated. I'm gonna change this to, um, the speaker view. So first.
I also can't share my screen yet, I'll just test it.
Okay, uh. Yes, let me, so you're a panelist, but we're going one level more. Steve, can I, I think we can only have two co-hosts? Okay, good, you are a co-host. So if the stars are aligned, this should work.
But I'm giving you a test of sound, does anyone know? Or do I stay muted?
Oh, stay muted. I think it shares your computer audio.
Yeah, it does.
I don't know how I get sound.
I think he has to turn the sound up on the TV now.
No, it's up on the TV. Um, what if that little bar next to the play triangle, that sound, uh, on the bottom? Through the, yeah, that. No, that, okay.
Yeah, that's what it is.
I think that should just be for on my laptop.
Go to the bottom right-hand corner, and it'll do the whole thing.
Is that on?
Yeah.
She doesn't know you the video. You can just. What? I can't hear you.
Okay, so, um, gi- give us a second on this, and we'll see if they can, um, if, if they can get it.
Do you want me to, my John's a different section?
No, it's gonna suck. I don't know. If she's a co-host and she can't play, it's like.
We wanted to share some of our highlights of our time here at Monument Mountain. One, we believe that my Mount, Monument Mountain is just a great school, and it's a great place to learn. Um, one, it's a beautiful place, and the school is amazing. Uh, and we just think that if you don't know that, I think. It's a good thing to hear that somebody who doesn't live here, teach here, and experience this school each day comes in and says that, hey, this is a really nice place, and you're doing well. So just for, um, sometimes people think that when coaches come in, when support comes in, that there's some thing wrong. And there isn't anything wrong here. We think it's a wonderful place, but do we all have places to grow and things that we can? And then, yes, us collectively and you as a school, um, as a school body as well. So, but yes, Monument Mountain is a fantastic place, and we enjoy our drives here too.
Yeah.
It, it's just beautiful. And I'm so happy that Gretchen has joined me, uh, this year to, um, be here. Um, number two, every single teacher that we've had an opportunity to spend time with, and that we've met with, is passionate about their students and has solid content knowledge. That is important. It is very important that we're not talking about, well, we really need to boost the content knowledge, or we need to motivate teachers on, on getting excited about teaching. That is not on our list of things to do to get you excited. So kudos to you. And what's today's date? I mean, people might not be counting, but maybe your students are counting. We are coming towards the end of the school year, and you've heard us say it before. We're here so that we can end strong and begin strong, and it's a great thing for us to think about. So as we're in your classes and we're giving you some feedback, you know, you might be able to implement some things here and there during these last few weeks, and see some small changes. But think about, what are you gonna do next year to begin with making those changes that you did at the end of the school year, right, Gretchen?
Yeah. We were laughing. We said that like, somebody wants to take a video of themselves right now, and being like, no cell phones, for real. No cell phones. Because at the beginning of the school year, everybody's always like, oh, maybe. But I'm just telling you right now, for posterity's sake, y'all said no cell phones, and it would make your lives easier, and make your classes easier too.
Yeah, play this video at the beginning of the school year, and it was, you all said that you don't want cell phones, so remember, no cell phones. Because you said it, not because we said it, but you know, it's really important to do what you believe and you feel passionately about. So keep the passion strong, and continue to grow in your content knowledge, and to rest in that area of knowing that you're good in that space. Uh, number three, there is just an amazing common theme of respect and community going throughout this building. Every classroom that you go in, there's a sense of community. And I think Gretchen said it nicely, um, during her first visit here, that it's really relaxed. Um, and, you know, the students feel comfortable, the teachers feel comfortable. And I think that I noticed that when I was here a few years ago, and I immediately felt like it was a nice place to be, and I felt like I was at home. And, I mean, so much so, and as far as the, the, the school culture, that I thought it was unique, that a kid could come into a classroom with a cup of coffee, and get a little bit of sugar in one of their classes. And, and that might seem like something odd to note to you, but I haven't seen that in other schools. And it speaks volumes to the level of community that you've established here in your school. And I know that it's a small community too, and so that, that builds on that. But, um, Gretchen, you've said that you really like that about this tool community. So thank you for allowing us into your school community, and continue to keep that community atmosphere, because learning takes place in safe spaces, like good learning, right? Um, the long-term learning, effective learning, takes place in those spaces. So that's very positive. And number four, the teachers here have been so open and willing to share with one another, to work with each other. And sometimes this is an obstacle, that we have to go into schools to support, to problem solve. And that's not an issue, like, we can handle that. And if there's some issues that we haven't seen yet, that's okay. Don't be afraid. We're willing to do that and to support you through it. But what we've seen is just, just a collegial atmosphere of, oh, yeah, we work together. We talk to each other at least every day, three times a week. Um, even if it's not a planning time, we are sharing materials, sharing ideas with one another. And this is a great space for us to be in as teachers, as colleagues, and for those who are supporting the greater good of the students that we're working with. And then special note, we have to say this, that you guys are so great, that during your common, um, common time, your common prep time, you saw a need, and you decided to create a course for your English language learners, the newcomers to your community, and create a class. How unique, how notable, um, of a task for you to do as, as a team of teachers. And so kudos to you for doing that. So those were just some of the things that we've noticed, that we just wanted to say. Um, we've seen great things here. We're, we appreciate the time that you've allowed us to see you and to come into your classes. And I echo everything that Gretchen has said, um, about what we're coming in to look for. And it's a, you know, it's a reciprocal relationship that we want to learn from you as well, and how we can improve to support you.
Okay. Did you have to go out there, because it was making more noise?
My computer was talking, and that was fine.
Okay, great. Uh, so I, I, that's just a snippet of the kind of feedback they're sharing, but, but I, I think it's important and interesting. What I'd like to do is, is give, uh, Christie a chance to tie some of this up, and then, uh, if there's anything left to say, I'll, I'll say a, a couple more things.
Okay. So, um, I'd like to start with some of the highlights from the feedback we received from our family survey that we sent out. Uh, we, um, we received responses from a hundred and seventy families this spring. Sixty-four of the respondents have ninth graders specifically. The feedback reported from the families, um, did mirror some of what we heard from the students and teachers already. Sixty-six percent of the families, um, responding that have ninth graders said their classes were just the right level. Thirty-one percent of them said they found it too easy, three percent too difficult. Um, only twenty-seven percent reported that the adjustment to profici- the proficiency-based system was going very well, and another thirty percent said it was going okay. Um, so we're still like, we're just over the fifty percent mark, even in just terms of the okay. So, as expected, we also asked open-ended questions, and we received detailed responses about components of the work that have gone well, and others reporting back to us on areas of growth and need for improvement. So some of the comments in the warm feedback are, nice effort in shifting the ninth grade approach, keep it going. My son is thriving, I'm so grateful, um, happy with the amount of homework. Could not have asked for a better transition to high school, efforts in proficiency learning and de-level classes, advisory groups, and creating space for students to flourish at their own pace, while developing connections with adults and students. Excellent curriculum, especially in social studies and biology. Appreciate that all students now have access to the same learning opportunities. Great teachers, especially out of the circumstances. Some of the cool feedback, and this is just a sampling, there is more. Our school committee will actually give a longer report, that we will provide you before the next school committee meeting. Um, the cool feedback, most of the work is mostly not very challenging. Students are getting bored and not meeting their potential. Honors distinction is busy work. Parents do not know or understand what the honors assignments are. There's no set guidelines on honors distinction for teachers or students, so it's too subjective. Teachers' expectations and assignments across the grade differ greatly. The feedback on ninth grade experience specifically, but also the. The feedback on ninth grade experience specifically, but also the overall experience at Monument have served to inform some of our next steps that we're going to be taking. As both the students and the teachers mentioned, the issues around the proficiency-based grading while we are still in the 0 to 100 reporting out in Power School is a substantial change, a challenge. The one thing that I would like to say just as a frame is, from an administrative perspective, it's a little bit of a chicken and the egg. Because if we changed our system, but students, families and teachers didn't actually have the language and practices to report out, no one would understand what they were even reporting on. If we change our practices but don't change the system, we are where we are now, right? And so there is just a process of change that does have some component of messiness as we go through the transition from the 0 to 100, traditional reporting app that folks are used to, to the model of totally reporting app on proficiencies. We are thinking very carefully about next steps. So as Peter already shared, we have our Rethinking Rating Grant. And the plan right now is we are working on a draft that is going to refine more closely so that there's closer alignment across the ninth grade team and 10th grade team in content areas. How proficiency grading will be recorded next year and what the translation from proficiencies to the 0 to 100 scale will look like so that there's more consistency. That will help, I think, both teachers, students understanding their feedback and families understanding where students stand. We're also working to really clearly narrow in on what is the definition of honors distinction and how that actually is going to be communicated to families and then reported so that students' families understand where students stand. This is going to be in draft form at the last week of June, beginning of July is the plan. That's going to be shared with the ninth and 10th grade team. I also hope to share it with students who have been working on all of this so that we can get questions and feedback or refinement. So the beginning of August, we have that defined for what we're going to use this coming year. The grant is going to support our work over the next two years. The fellow will be working with coaches from two agencies that the state is providing. We'll be doing research on how other schools have made this transition. We'll be looking at using resources from mastery.org to make a strategic plan so that we can, over two years or three years, make a full shift from the 0 to 100 grading system that we have to a full proficiency-based transcript. But we want a strategic plan to do that. And that is going to be the work of the upcoming year with the Rethinking Rating Fellows. The ninth and 10th grade teams this summer, and actually it starts next week, are going to be continuing their work with Tanya and Gretchen on the differentiation and universal design work that they're doing. They're also next week, we're bringing in another educator who has over 30 years of experience in instruction and educational leadership and just launched a, a new consultancy. IP Squared is the name of the company that he works for, with his founder of. And he's specifically going to be working with the ninth and 10th grade teachers on assessment development, using group grads and examining student work so that we can improve rigor and feedback in the context of proficiencies. We're looking to continue to work on building out our student advisory board. This summer, we actually are going to be training more students with Up for Learning because we think that building, continuing to build student voice, train students as facilitators and really work in partnership because that is the vision, right? We've talked a lot about student voice. Student voice is wonderful, but really this has to be a partnership where the students have opportunity to give regular, ongoing, real-time feedback so that teachers actually hear that information and can make adjustments. Like Ms. Cook responded like, hey, when I made this change and Hannah came up and responded like, this worked better. Then it's that kind of feedback that we want to actually have more of so that students are more at the table and in the conversation. We are also next year putting in substantial changes to our advisory structure. We are keeping just two days a week of 30 minutes. But we are creating a teacher leadership team around this that's going to meet and plan weekly. We are rolling out a strong curriculum and we're building a weekly team time for the teams of teachers to work together. So part of this, we hope, is going to be improved support for students. I know it's one of the things I witnessed that the ninth grade team actually did at the end of this year because they realized it was a structure they could leverage in terms of identifying students who needed more support. They would have conversations one day and then the next advisory period, they would have like, okay, today's biology day. The biology teachers would actually be working to support students who needed additional support. Or they would do a English language or writing walk during advisory. So that kind of thing that we want to look to do more of. I do want to also just remind people, because I think it's important as we talk about all of the ninth and 10th grade work, to remember that we are making also at the same time substantial progress and shifts at the 11th and 12th grade level. So I'm just going to kind of run through a list of things that are happening in the 11th and 12th grade experience as we're doing all of this ninth and 10th grade work. We are maintaining our strong AP program. The academic program in 11th and 12th grade, the art and design offerings that we've had that have always been a strength of our district. But we're also extending the number of courses that we're offering that we have articulation agreements with BCC and with other community colleges where students are earning college credit for their work while they're at home. We're introducing new courses next year in world, world history, economics, cybersecurity, engineering design and intro to healthcare that includes a partnership with Fairview Hospital. We're creating a major space next year that has two new CNC machines. We're continuing to expand internship opportunities. We're actually moving towards building co-ops so that students will actually be paid for their internship opportunities. We're bringing back our WISE program, which is an in-depth 12th grade independent study experience that we had for a long time and haven't had in several years. And we're also beginning talks about an early college program. So I just want to like put that on the table because we are in no way trying to hold anyone back. The whole goal of all of our work is to support every single student in having extensive opportunities to be prepared for whatever their post-secondary experience is. And so I just, I did want to let it out there because I think it's, I don't want that to get lost in the context of the whole ninth and 10th grade conversation.
Yeah, June.
Yeah, thank God. I thanked you all for your welcomeness at the beginning of this. I think I jinxed myself though. It was really concerning the fact that the strategic plan will be created in three years for grading, a very simple process and structure. Because that seems like a very, very necessary thing to be done years before this goes into effect, not three years down the road from now. Because that just echoes the fact that the administration doesn't value students' time in the building. And is really, really concerning. It seems to me that this committee creates subcommittees when we have concerns and that they address those concerns and provide accountability. We created a communication subcommittee just a few weeks ago. Wish I could make the motion, but I can't. So from the student perspective, I think it's invaluable that there is a subcommittee created to track the accountability and progress on this. And I also have a bunch of suggestions, which would entail the district doing a deep dive into financially supporting more teachers or financially supporting smaller class sizes, as we heard our successful implementation tools. Thinking about how we could maybe have the coaches support us throughout the entire year. Because this work doesn't just happen in the summer, it happens through the entire school year. So it would be invaluable to have their resources the whole year. And how do we pay for that? Yeah.
Just a quick reaction. You bring up some really interesting ideas. Some of them are in progress. Some of them we're discussing and some of them have been on a particular timeline. So before this meeting, there was a finance subcommittee meeting that, and they'll report on it, but set a calendar for the year. Conversations about reducing class size will start in, in September. That will lead through a series of meetings in, in December to an eventual vote in, in March. So there's that. The coaches are working with us throughout the year. I don't want to go, I don't want to go point by point, but, but many of the things you bring up are, are in, in process. And some of the things that seem simple, like grading is a simple thing, is actually extraordinarily complex. And, and one of the lessons learned was sort of this cycle of understanding. Absent the context of doing the work, it's really easy to be self-confident about one's capacity to move forward. And then you're confronted with the realities and the challenges in the middle of doing the work, which helps you reevaluate where you are and plan differently. So I think it's really important that we don't have either or thinking, but we have and and both thinking. And we do planning and then we pay attention to what's going on. And then we make shifts as that's going on. And then we do more planning and continue to make shifts.
I just want to respond to the class size. So last year when we were setting things up for this year's schedule, Beth and Elsa actually alluded to this a little bit. When Beth explained that she was assigned to team teach two biology classes and then on the ground, there were shifts that just happened. We had an influx of English language learners. We had to pull some of our teaching staff that we had actually designated for team, team teaching to create courses for those learners, which had to be the priority. And then where possible, I allowed the ninth grade team to make adjustments to do team teaching in the places that they were available and could respond to student needs. When we made the choice to allocate so much of our resources so that we had team teachers, that inevitably then creates larger class sizes. Next year, I've actually had conversations with the ninth and 10th grade team and all of the teachers in the content areas. And we've made a different choice, which is to not have as many of our resources allocated to team teaching, but to actually create smaller class sizes. So as of right now, in the four core content areas, we've allocated more sections of all of them so that class sizes are going to be in the range of 15 students per class. But that then means there are not as many teachers available for the type of team teaching that was described. It's, it's one or the other. We don't have enough resources for both.
Can I just ask a question? I thought I heard the two teachers say they would rather have team teaching with 24 students as opposed to having smaller classes. So is that something you could revisit with all the teachers?
I can, but one of the problems in scheduling is we can assign two teachers to be a team and they get assigned to a class. That particular class might not be the class that actually has the need for the team teaching. Right? And then the team teacher, okay, well, we want to try to change that. In the biology case, it actually worked out. It doesn't work out everywhere. Because the teacher might be teaching an upper class of AP Lit and that's the class that needs the support and that teacher is not available to push into the class that actually needs it. So we've had a lot of conversation about this. I can revisit with the ninth and 10th grade team. I would be happy to do that. But I am being responsive to what the teachers are saying they think would be best in the scheduling, so.
Corey, give you a.
Yeah, just a question about the, the grading. And I, and I don't see the grading issue as being isolated to the ninth grade. I think I have enough kids go through all the grades to know that there are pitfalls all around. But given that it's something that's come up as a source of confusion and frustration with the students, I've heard it on the parent's side and now we're hearing on the teacher's side too, and kind of to expand Elsa's kind of example. I mean, is there anything kind of short-term and immediate change that can be planned or implemented for September?
That's what I just described.
Okay, because that's what you described, what I was hearing was that it was still longer term.
So what I, what I said was, we're going to be developing a short-term plan for this fall. That plan is going out at the end of Jan. July for the teens and the students to respond to that is going to better define honors distinction and better define how we're going to report on proficiencies and it's going to translate to a 0 to 100 grade. So we're still going to have a translation to a 0 to 100 grade. We have to. We are not ready yet to have transcripts that report out on proficiencies. We have to have a process, and that's part of what this grant is with the Rethinking Rating Fellow, to do research, like very thorough research, so we understand and look at other models so that when we choose a transcript, these transcripts have to go to college, right? Students are going to apply with proficiency-based transcripts that we want to do correctly. So this doesn't have a negative impact.
Let me just intervene. What will likely happen is when we start to make this shift, we like, we'll come up with a whole plan. It'll be very well articulated. We'll bring it to the school committee for it's probably policy first and then the, and then the school committee.
I care less about Gary. I want to make sure that the people that have been involved with this process up to this point have had a chance to weigh in.
No, everybody will. And then in all likelihood, something like we, when we, we feel in a place that it's, it's good and I'm not committing to whether it's a year or two, then we have a big public conversation about it in October. And then it gets rolled out the next fall or September. And, and you start with the ninth grade and slowly you, you build it up. So in the first year, it's in ninth grade. The next year is ninth and 10th grade. The year after, it's ninth, 10th, 11th. And then, and then the, the legacy system, the system we're currently using now, would just simply cease to exist. And there are many other districts that have done it and there are big national consortias around it. And there are lots of really good models. And we're not going to invent it from scratch, but we are going to put the, our own spin on it. Other reactions or things people are wondering about?
I mean, I just, when we went into this last summer and I did a lot of research on it. And what became apparent to me is that class size is critical. This is a harder way for teachers to teach. They need to basically almost individualize lesson plans for each child. So it's critical that you have a manageable amount of students. It's not fair to the teachers to put 20 plus kids in a class and expect them to be able to be successful. I just don't think it can happen. I've done a lot of research that I looked at. Again, I mean, we're not going to be able to have a Phillips Academy and or Exeter of eight to 12 kids. But I think if, in the future, for whatever reason, if it gets to be more than 15 or 16 kids, you have to pull them out for English language, you have to pull them out for whatever reason it is. I mean, I, and maybe you did bring to the committee and it just went over my head or I didn't listen to it. But I mean, I think that's a tipping point where you get from 15 to 16 to even 18 or 19 and the failure rate is going to descend quickly. Because you're just, the teacher just can't physically attend and make individualized, basically what we're, we're asking new lesson plans for that many kids. So I don't think it's fair to the, to the teachers and I don't think it's fair to the kids, both the high end, the middle and the low end. So I'm happy to hear that you have a plan in the mid-teens going forward. I just hope that if, for whatever reason, whatever unknown situations comes up. I mean, I would move to allocate whatever mid-budget season funds we need to try to find teachers so that it doesn't happen again. And I just want to make sure. So for the, for the, around 15 kids for, for class, that's both ninth and 10th grades? Okay. Thanks.
And importantly and historically, most schools do the opposite, right? So the smallest classes in high schools are often in highly specialized classes in the upper grades where, where students are presumably very sophisticated, right? And I won't call it specific classes because I'll get phone calls tomorrow. But, but there might be classes that seniors are in that have eight or six students. And really what we need to do over time is invest those resources in the, in the ninth and 10th graders and not necessarily the, the, the 12th graders.
Or get to a point where we have enough kids who want to achieve or are able to achieve at the 12th grade level, have 14.
Those classes, yeah, very much so. So I, I'd like to just say just a couple of things in, in closing. Two things that scream out to me that obviously is where our work is going to be going is around increasing rigor. that obviously is where our work is going to be going is around increasing rigor. And then also like to make a commitment that we change the language going forward. And I'll, I'll borrow this from you all, from de-leveling to, to leveling up.
That's right.
So the, the, the white paper that supported a lot of this was, was around equity and access for all, that, that document. The next version of that document will be loosely called rigor for all, and then it'll articulate how we're going to get further along. So I really appreciate all the voices in this, and it, it's not, clearly not like the end of the conversation. It's, it's the continuation of the conversation. What I think we can do is, is make a commitment, and I'm making the commitment, but, but you all too, that we continue this conversation publicly at least every two or three meetings. So I don't want to wait till next June to have another conversation about it. Let's, let's, and I don't know, sometimes I think having another subcommittee is a great idea, and sometimes I think it's, it'll make us all nuts.
At one point, you were putting together a benchmark committee, I remember, because you, there were key measures that you were pulling out that were going to be measured and reported on, and there was going to be a subset of people. So at some point, and I don't know if it was officially called a subcommittee, but there were going to be a group of people looking into this kind of data.
Yeah, I mean, we did all that work around the, the the annual report. We, we'll continue that work. I don't know if it'll be an ad hoc committee or be like the whole committee, but I think it's important that we continue these discussions at least every couple of meetings, right? Maybe not every.
I'm sick of the COVID update agenda item. Why don't we strike that and add this, this update?
Yeah, because it's gone, right? We're green and we're done. Yeah, good. I'm sick of giving the COVID update.
Can I just say two things?
Yeah.
And Rich says, you know, I was going to be quiet, but yeah. One, this is what our work on a school committee is. I'd sit next to Rich at graduation, and I say, and, and he does too, he says, this is great. This is wonderful to see because this is why we're here, not why we're on the stage, we're, we're for who we're looking at out there. I love that this night was brought to us by teachers and students together in, in harmony with the purpose that we all serve here for. So that's the first thing. It's a meeting about education, which I love. It's a meeting that we didn't have to discuss figures, grants, or anything. We discussed what really is what we're doing in this district. We're doing education. And I thank everyone for being able to be here and to have this discussion. As Peter has just said, and, and Rich has kind of seconded, we need more of this. It tells us what we're doing. And it's great to see students, and it's great to see teachers, because we talk about you sometimes in the abstract. It's like, oh, your number's on a budget, okay? You're so many teachers per section, okay? It's wonderful to see you here. We need more of it. And the second thing is, it's going to be called labeling up, not de-leveling.
Leveling up.
Leveling up.
One of the interesting parts is if you're on the school committee, it's long enough, things go in cycles. And when I first started, and we had a lot of discussions with students and the faculty, and for a variety of reasons, right, we haven't needed it or not, but students and faculty are always welcome here to speak, and they don't have to speak. You know, I told Peter a long time ago, the good news needs to slow down a little bit because it got to be a half hour and forty-five minutes of good news. But we know there were other things that.
Real news.
Really, so we're there. We're not a communist country only against the good news. And that's okay. We're willing to listen to both and help fix the problems or listen to why those problems can be fixed. And so it did prove tonight that four students, not a, a whole sample, but four of the most articulate students I've ever heard come before the school committee, proved that Monument once again has some of the most tremendous students in, at least Massachusetts, probably in the country. Because for a freshman to come forward and say what you said and as articulate as you did is just amazing. But that, we have a school committee that's willing to listen to that. And there's no getting back at anything. Let's fix it. Let's, there were some good parts and bad parts. Let's fix the bad parts and continue on the good parts. And that, that's where we're going to go. And we had two teachers tonight who were absolutely amazing. And, you know, when you have teachers that have that type of motivation and enthusiasm, how can you go wrong? It's got to be right. And Sean's been here forever, so. And, and I think it's just, it's absolutely tremendous. And I don't think we have to say we're going to put it on an agenda every three meetings. I think we're going to want to do that because we want to watch the progress. And, and not watch over it, but just watch it. And, and I think it's a big difference. So I expect to see the four of you back very often, so forget Thursday nights from now on. And, and this will work out. It's not as bad as people thought, and it's not as good as it could have been. And it will work out.
Great. So a couple of things. We're, we're passing over the COVID update. We're green and we're going on vacation.
Sorry, Peter, could I just jump in?
Yes.
I think it's important before this summer, for me at least, to hear, Chris, you reminded us that we shouldn't be exclusively focusing on the ninth grade and the incoming tenth graders with this change. And I do remember agreeing last year that the changes to proficiency-based learning would be best implemented in the elementary and middle schools first. And I was just wondering, do we have changes that have been happening this year in the lower schools? And do we have work that's going on this summer to support that?
Yeah, so it's really easy, and there's a quick answer. So the elementary schools on a full-based proficiency report card without numbers, and they've been doing this work for years. So that's great. The, the middle school has been doing the work for years, but they're still in a, in a numerical system. And, and even the middle school, like, all of this is a, is a work in progress. But the, the interesting thing is, is the elementary school work is super sophisticated, and people in the district who are looking for other models didn't realize we have an in-house model that's, that's really pretty good. So it's, it's all, all in process, but. Here's a pile of reports. I'll pass them around. Let's make sure the school committee members get one first. Doreen is at home, like, and it's going to be, I just emailed her, and it's going to be in the school committee packet for broader reading and distribution. This is the student report. Christie has another data set on the family surveys, and those will go in shortly, and, and then there'll be additional. Yeah, that's what I meant. And when I meant the school committee packets, so the electronic version of the school committee packet is, is where all of us will, will sit. But let's pass this around. There, there are lots of them, I think, but school committee members first, and then anybody else. And then if we need more copies, I'll, I'll get more. So the regional school district planning board, just that quick update. In, in June, and let me just pull up so I say the dates correctly, but in the end of June, there are two electronic meetings on on the twenty-eighth and the thirtieth. And the easiest place to see that, and I'll send it out a couple more times to the broader community, is on the, the regional school district planning board website, which is eight towns.org. I'll send a, I've got like an email list to a couple thousand people. I'll send it out repeatedly so you don't have to write it down, but then funny, it's not, June twenty-eighth and June thirtieth from five thirty to seven thirty. On the eight towns.org website, you can click to register, and that gives you access to some summary reports. So it's better to register than to, I mean, you can still just show up on the day, but if, if you register, it's good for the group because you're on the mailing list and you get this report. So that's, that's what's going on with that. So Steve, I turned over something.
Yeah, policy is not met. Jason, buildings and grounds.
We have not met.
Superintendent's evaluation.
We've met, and we have an evaluation.
So next meeting?
It'll, it'll, I mean, I have some copies here, but we'll share it electronically.
Yeah, that's what we would like.
We've all voted on it, or the committee's voting. Just got the last vote. So it'll be shared, I think, in the morning, right?
I'll, I'll have Doreen send it out.
And if somebody wants a copy tonight, I have a couple of copies.
Technology subcommittee is not met. Ready to finance?
We met. We laid out our, what I think now, we started a firm calendar for the FY twenty-four planning process. I won't go through it, but maybe, what's that?
Put it in the packet.
Yeah, put it in the packet for the next meeting. There's not a meeting between now and then. The, basically, the process is going to mirror what we've done. Historically, we were a little truncated last year, but I think it's, I think it's a good plan.
Can I just show one little addition?
Yeah.
We're going to do a couple workshops on a budget one-on-one, one for teachers and likely one for students so people understand the budget process so they can weigh in more proactively. What often happens is, like, we get to town meeting and somebody's like, why can't I do this? And they forget that the budget was actually voted on in March. So in, in early September, not right when school starts, but, but a little bit in, we'll do a series of workshops, which should be helpful. And school, I mean, school committee members have been through it, right? But you might pick up something new if you.
No, yeah.
Yeah, I think we talked about doing, but it hasn't happened yet, but putting together this life cycle calendar from the school committee, with different points of the budget process, school improvement, plan reviews, all those kinds of things that I still think would be useful, not only for us, but to communicate out to the general.
Yeah, so I have a draft of it, and it's just, I gotta, it's a little more than fine. I gotta do some more work on the draft, but maybe what I'll do is I'll, I'll, I'll do a little work on it, and then we'll sort of, a handful of people can react to it, and then, and then we'll share a, a more final draft.
Communication subcommittee, that's. That's what I thought. That's what I was asking.
Is it disbanded?
I don't think it's disbanded, but.
First phase is, is done, but then, like, the, yeah.
So we'll leave that on the agenda for.
Yeah.
Anything in the personnel?
Yeah, so this is hiring season. A, a bunch of great hires we're excited about. Isabel Morley, social studies, hired at the high school. She is a Monument graduate and did her student teaching here. We're really excited about that. Heather Boyko is shifting from math to science. She previously worked as a chemist. So that's taking advantage of her work experience. Hannah Gottschau is a new health teacher who did a lot of really interesting work in youth health, sort of different groups, but parallel to the approach Railroad Street takes. So that's, that's very exciting. Matthew Schneider is our new strings teacher. He had a lot of experience in public schools in Long Island, and then ran his own private music thing, including a giant music camp and, and all this other stuff. He's very exciting. He's really fired up to teach across all grades. And he has suggested that in two or three years, we'll have several hundred people playing not just violins, but violas and stand-up basses and any other stringed instrument you can think of. And then the last two hires, Kristen McLaughlin, who's a science teacher at the, at the middle school. And we've won resignation. Eric Carlson, our, our current band teacher. And, and we thank him for his years teaching band during COVID, which was, which was no easy test. Okay, I mean, oh, and the vacancies. So kindergarten one, the elementary school did interviews. Did you make an offer yet or not yet? Okay, so a math and music teacher at the middle school, multiple paraprofessional positions, which the updated compensation scale will help. And then the band position.
And math at high school.
I'm sorry, I missed one. And, and math at high school. So that's it.
Any old or new business? Any public comment?
Let me go back to that. And Steve, Steve behind you. Go ahead, Steve. Just say your name and address.
I'm Steve Boyd. I live in West Oak Ridge. I'm here to graduate from high school and who's here tonight, freshman. I think, of course, I did a great job, but the teachers were the most encouraging tonight. We say it works stronger from the experience. I think that it takes great leadership to be able to say, we made a mistake, we learn from it, and we're going to do better. And that was, I think, the most important thing that I heard tonight. And then it's a process. I do think, Julian, sometimes you fly the plane, sometimes you go in a plane while you're flying it. It's a fluid situation, although I hate to agree with you. I do think that having a plan is really important. And Peter, when you laid out the scenario around how we would change our proficiency-based learning over a period of time, that gives great context to what's to come or, you know. So I don't think that it has to be a super specific plan, because we know it's an iterative process and it will change. But having some guideposts would be very helpful, I think, for all of us. There were a lot of metrics that justified this decision last year. There were lots of discussions that justify the purpose. And I think it's important to have lots of data. And eventually, some of them will percolate to the top to frequently check back and forth on. Because there are some things that may be interesting about what happens next December when everyone feels blue again, and you'll remember from the experience. And we'll be able to maybe gradually track how things are going, how many students are engaged in different things. I, I was thinking, I think Jason made a good point. I think that it's hard, hard to do beginners and experts if you're teaching backstroke. It's still backstroke, whether you're an Olympian or a beginner. And to the degree that we can continue to argue against, I guess, both qualitative and quantitative guideposts is really, would be helpful to me. So I think some of those metrics are nice to hear from the school committee on in terms of how we track and improve a problem, the plan, whatever it may be.
Yeah, I mean, one of the, I agree, and, and we'll work really hard on that. We did a lot of work around looking at all sorts of different metrics. And the, I think the surveys accurately reflect things, because of the last couple of years of COVID, we tried to compare as what we're doing now better than last year or the year before. And you can't even do it. It's so, the COVID thing is so wacky. So we looked at this year's data compared to pre-COVID numbers. And, and it's interesting, and, and you only see dramatic things when you get into very small subgroups. And then within the small subgroups, there are issues around validity, because, because there are not enough people. But we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep looking at it. And I think the true value in a lot of the survey stuff is that it'll be a baseline. So when you look at the student stuff and, and Christie's family data, there, I think in both cases, there's a data from December, January, and data at the end of the year. And some things got better, some things actually got worse.
I think on the sidelines, and I know you guys don't need this, but when it, when you, as an observer here, maybe we'll put it on the agenda, maybe we won't, that feels very organic. And I think that it should be really intentional. We've made this really seminal shift in the pedagogy of the school, and I think it begs a great deal of attention in many ways.
I think where we were equivocating was every three meetings, every two meetings, not whether, if it was going to be.
Not at all. Not at all.
But if we weren't clear about that, it, it will be on the agenda. Just, uh, I don't want it on the agenda just for the sake of having it. I want something good to be able to be reported, good or bad, but I want something that's important. Anyone else?
I make a motion that all future school committee meetings, in addition to being on Zoom, be open to the public.
Uh, since it's not on the agenda, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. And we'll, we can open the next one up anyways. I don't.
I wa, I would say, I'll say this, I think, um, tenants of fair democracy and of open seats to our citizens who require the chairman to allow people to publicly participate in all future meetings unless there is an impending health, uh, a situation that would deter that, which there certainly is no longer.
We are disagreeing. I'm not totally agreeing that there's not a health problem, but we, we will try to do that in the next.
Sufficient to prevent people from meeting in person like they do in classrooms and stores and courtrooms everywhere. We're the, we're the only place for closed doors anymore. It's not right. And this is the best meeting we've had in three years by far because of the people in the room.
Yep. Uh, Steve, I think Steve behind you.
In addition to metrics, I think to, to focus on quality of the plan is the only other thing that I sort of thought about as you guys were all reporting in that, um, you're doing a lot, um, Christine. And sometimes, um, more isn't better. And I think that, that, um, you gotta change and iterate, but you don't have to do sweeping change every single year. In fact, I think that would be a challenge.
Anyone else?
I kind of echoed some of Steve's original points, but I think it was really so helpful to have the two of you speak and sort of make sure that as we're collecting data to make sure that we emphasize the teacher places. Hearing our ninth grade, parents hearing from ninth grade students is wonderful, but that's all they know is what they're in right now. And with the teachers, you've, uh, you know, for the most part, many of these people have been doing it a lot of different ways over a lot of different years. They do a little more perspective and kind of able to comprehend the jobs. Not just to go out for the year.
Yeah, that's good. Come on.
I'm Melissa Roller. I'm from Richmond. I'm Hannah's mom and Bill's daughter. I just want to thank you all for being so receptive. I think they were pretty discouraged after doing some of the teachers and talking to other groups. And I think the teachers were discouraged because they don't like to hear this. Like ninety-one responses out of a hundred and thirty-four students. I mean, that's a lot. That's a great, that's a great survey. You don't usually get that high. Um, but, and I, I think when they said a wasted year, I really feel like it's because they're scared. They're scared they won't be ready for the next steps. Um, because these four particularly are so high achieving and they challenge themselves very much. Um, to their detriment sometimes to their parents. But I think in the greater good for everybody else that they're looking forward to having more rigor. And I just wanted to thank you guys for listening to that because I feel like it's really important. And I think your teachers are really much more at ease with the choice to continue at Monument next year. Because it is for all of them, it was a choice to go back for 10th grade and because people are willing to make some changes and listen to them, we've made the choice to stay.
That's great, Peter. Anyone else?
Sure, Jane.
By unanimous consent, we are here.